Very good evening to you. Welcome to CHOICE 2017, the race this week. So like I mentioned, a lot has happened this week. President Huru Kenyatta is in central Kenya. And before I get to my panelist, I would like us to take a look at what happened today to Teto Member of Parliament Dungu Guevenge. And then we'll have a conversation with him from our Nyeri studio, then I can engage my panelists.
I received a call from a strange number. Somebody claiming to be the county commissioner of Nyeri County, one Julius Karoko. And he proceeded to inform me that as an independent candidate, I had no business attending the function of the president, who is currently in Nyeri County. The call duration lasted for 1 minute and 35 seconds. He told me that this is a Jubilee function and that I was not welcome. He then proceeded to threaten my person by saying that he has information that I am planning to shout down the deputy president of the Republic of Kenya in their leg in Teto. And he then proceeded to tell me that if that were to happen, I will be treated as an enemy of the state.
Great, so that is Teto Member of Parliament Dungu Guevenge earlier on during the day. Allow me to now speak to him from our Nyeri studio. Mushmua, good evening. Thank you for speaking to us on CHOICE 2017. I've just listened to a little bit of what you had to say during the day. And apart from the allegations that were leveled against you that you planned to heckle the deputy president, are there any specific reasons that you're given for being asked not to attend the function?
Thank you, Linda. There were no specific reasons given. That call came out of the blue. It was unexpected and I would say even unwarranted. Because the president and the deputy president are the president and the deputy president of the Republic of Kenya, and they are the president of all Kenyans, whether they be KOD, NASA, Jubilee, Mayandeleo, Chap Chap, Independent or otherwise. Therefore, there is no legal basis whatsoever or no political reasons at all for anybody to be requested to keep off a presidential function if they have an interest in the president and interested in supporting the president or hearing what the president has to say in order possibly to be convinced that they want to support the cause of the presidency and to vote for him. So for any person, and let alone Linda, and let me say it here, an administrator, a civil servant, servant of the people, to attempt to intimidate any Kenyan of any station in life, and least of all, an elected leader, a person elected by the people constitutionally, representing the public, and a person, in my case, who is also a senior leader in the National Assembly, holding the seat of the Chair of the Defence and Foreign Relations, for him to even attempt to think of calling to intimidate me clearly represents that this gentleman is not in the right frame of mind. And if indeed that call came from his phone and it was him who was speaking, he has no business being a representative of the Republic of Kenya. He has no business being a county commissioner. He has no business being any commissioner whatsoever. And should be withdrawn immediately. And personally, I will be seeking I will be seeking for his interdiction and removal as the county commissioner of Nyeri County.
So Mushmua, we're not even sure that that call indeed came from the county commissioner, are we?
He identified himself as Julius Karoko. I do not have his phone number. I have never met him. And the true caller application on my phone also identified him as Julius Karoko, county commissioner of Nyeri County. And I have given a report to the Nyeri County Police and CID to indeed verify that that telephone number was his and the time that the call was made. So that once that verification is made, because I do not know the person, I have never met him, he has never met me, then we will take the steps that need to be taken in ensuring that this individual is interdicted and dealt with properly in the law. Because there is no precedence. There is no law that a person in that station can intimidate any Kenyan for whatever political reason. In fact, politics and public service are divorced in the constitution. And he should know if he indeed is a county commissioner of any standing or even of any training, that politicians must be allowed to execute their space in peace, under the law and under the constitution. So what he did worried him because I'm still giving benefit of the doubt because I want the police to give a report as to that number. But as far as the conversation I had with him, he identified himself as such. And if it was him, I can tell him for free here on national television that we will not be cowed, we will not be intimidated. Those are antics and tactics that belong to a long-gone era. This is a new Kenya, we are new Kenyans. And if he wants to go that route, we will deal with him directly.
Mushmua, the second leader from that region to receive hostile treatment because you're running as an independent. Yesterday in Moranga, we saw Kembie Gittura being hounded out of a certain location where the president was supposed to hold a meeting. And today, you're saying you received a call asking you not to attend the president's function. Why in your mind do you think the ground is so hostile to independent candidates from that region, from your region specifically?
The ground is absolutely not hostile to independent candidates. In fact, quite the contrary and the opposite. If you saw the news clips of the president's trip in Nyeri and even in Moranga and even his trips in Kiambu County, specifically with regard to what happened today in Nyeri, the president himself on two occasions said, "Let the people decide." All he asked for is people to come out in large numbers and to elect leaders of the presidency like Mayandeleo Chap Chap, Kanu, PNU, Nak Kenya and others. All he wants is that the voter turnout be as high as possible. The votes go to him as a president, which they shall, and the rest, let the people decide. So the hostility is not coming from the ground. And let us be clear.
Where is it coming from?
The hostility is actually coming from the people in Jubilee who are competing with directly. And because there is the knowledge and possibly even the guilt of what happened in the nominations that caused the fallout, that caused, you know, the independents to stand as independents because of the hue and cry from their electorate from the public saying that they didn't get the opportunity to elect the people that they wanted to elect. And therefore, they requested on all occasions, in all constituencies, the people requested people like myself and others to stand as independent candidates so that they, as in Wajiko and the public, the voter, could have the opportunity to elect the leaders that they want. And not to have leaders, you know, force-fed to them by one party or another.
Right, Mushmua. Thank you so much for your time, for being part of CHOICE 2017 this evening. We hope you'll get a chance to resolve that and find out if indeed that call came from the county commissioner and get redressed for that. Thank you for speaking to us. So now, allow me to introduce my panelist. I have Alex Getundu, who's a lawyer and a political analyst and a familiar face on this show. Next to him, we have Silvanus Sosoro, who's also a lawyer, but is also an aspirant, but is also a political analyst. And then right next to him, we have Carvinz Owidi, who is a political analyst. Gentlemen, thank you for your time. So listening in to Guevenge. Alex, let me begin with you. What are your thoughts about independent candidates and how they're being treated?
I think they are being treated very unfairly. One thing that we must come up to terms with is that independent candidates are there. They are part of democracy. Their position and status, essentially in the constitution, is provided for. And there was a good reason why Wajiko insisted on that position and status. We borrowed it from other jurisdictions. And it's also for a good mission, for good reason. If you do not want to incline yourself or you don't want to be channeled along party lines or party dot lines, then you decide that I want to start as an independent and influence the policies and governance independently, then so be it. We have to respect them. They are a reality and there are very many. I've said this before here. They are a reality and there are very many. And some of them are very powerful. They are going to transform, especially in Nyeri. Nyeri, I don't expect some of these people from the mainstream parties to win.
You think the independents will take it?
At other parties, at other parties.
Another party?
Yes.
Silvanus, you're an aspirant. You have independence in that place.
Exactly.
Do they scare you?
No, they don't. In regard to what Mushmua has actually said here, and the question you've asked about the treatment. I do not really understand why we should even be asking about the treatments. Why do they want to fool themselves in political parties forums? I mean, you are an independent right from the beginning, right from the definition of the one independent. You are running as an independent candidate. What is actually happening is that these people want to take advantage of the fame of major political parties in that area, you know, associate themselves with those political parties so that they can actually run and win. I mean, because they're independents. So clearly, we need to know the motive of one that makes one run as an independent candidate. I mean, people like Mushmua Guevenge, who lost in the nominations. You lost, clearly, you lost. You are an independent candidate. Stop associating yourself with things to do with Jubilee and don't blame any person.
Okay, to be fair, what if he's running as an independent but he supports the reelection of the president?
That is okay. If you're supporting the reelection of the president, then support him as an independent candidate. Stop forcing yourself. Exactly. Inasmuch as I condemn the act of the county commissioner calling him and stopping him.
We're not even showing our country.
Because I need to understand this point. If he stopped him in his capacity as a candidate, like you're a candidate, don't attend this particular meeting, then to me, that is right. I mean, but ideally, he needs to have attended. He needs to have been allowed to attend that function as a Kenyan.
And an MP.
An MP. He might not be given an opportunity to address the public. That is okay because he actually serves Teto constituency up to now. But him trying to hide in the cage of independents then still supports Jubilee and says, "I'm an independent candidate." I mean, you lost.
So he shouldn't even have been there.
Exactly, he lost, he lost and he lost.
That's the same thing with Kevin.
He's an independent candidate.
That's the same thing with what happened to Kembie Gittura yesterday.
Exactly, you're independent. Stop, stop, stop running to parties, stop.
Carvinz, what are your thoughts?
You know, you guys are pretending that you don't know the tyranny in Jubilee. You get to know this thing. In fact, this guy, Guevenge, is pushing his lactofa. He can't be more powerful than a governor who is stopped from attending a function right in the center of his county. And he's surprised that somebody called him and told him not to go.
But he says the governor is in opposition.
Yoho, they were not even waiting for him to tell them not to go. They simply sent a force to block him. So this guy is in opposition to Jubilee now.
They treated him with respect anyway.
What did they do?
In fact, they treated him with respect.
The only tyranny in Jubilee. I agree with you with the usage of the word tyranny. The only tyranny in Jubilee is tyranny of popularity. Let's agree on that.
No, 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 no.
Yes. Secondly, fundamentally, we must understand this. If as a country, we do not want these candidates, independent candidates.
There are, there are very many.
No, you know, we may decide we don't want them. We may have to go for a referendum. We may have to go and...
Wait, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Who says that we do not want independent candidates? We only say that they need not to associate them.
Wait, let me finish. So you want them, but they should not associate them.
Yes.
You see, you cannot have your candidate. You cannot have your candidate. If we do not want independent candidates, then get rid of them from the constitution. Secondly, we must understand this, that in Kenya currently, when the president goes wherever he goes with his deputy, the people who attend those rallies are not only from Jubilee. Let's understand that. Some are from the other parties. Others are supporters of independent candidates. And these people, and we saw that yesterday. Kembie Gittura's supporters
Yeah, he came with the supporters.
were as many as Iloko Kangata's supporters. So, and they clashed. So the people who were actually at the forefront of causing all this mayhem and clashes yesterday are not actually the supporters, the core supporters. They aren't the voters themselves per se. These are goons that have been hired to go and chase out independent candidates and other parties, yes, candidates, so that it seems as if they own the president, which is wrong.
What about the call? The call that was made to Guevenge?
No, we are yet to verify. And secondly, you know, if these people are on the part of Jubilee, they may decide to misuse their administration.
Linda, let me help you here.
Okay, wait, you're helping me in a second. Let me speak to Justice Maena from Boomet. Justice, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, how are you?
Fine, how are you?
I'm doing well. I just want to speak on this matter of independent candidates. I want to imagine that the so-called independent candidates are a bit hypocritical because this was basically a Jubilee party event, right? This was a Jubilee rally. It was not a state function event. So I want to imagine that if someone is an independent candidate, it would be very fair for him and for Jubilee party to mind his own business, wait for his own rally, then he can engage with his own supporters. But once this is a Jubilee party event, then the independent candidates want to hang with the president's court or the deputy president's court. And that says that he must attend a rally that has been convened by the Jubilee madrilen. I want to imagine that is not fair. I mean, Guevenge must be fair to himself and the president. Otherwise, he's going to complain and complain and complain. And then I think...
Justice? Yes. Does it make a difference if Guevenge is running as an independent candidate but then he supports President Huru Kenyatta and he wanted to go and attend the function that is being attended by his presidential candidate?
Yes, it does because that is basically a Jubilee party event. And if it is a Jubilee party event, if he supports the president, it is not necessary for him to attend his rally. He can convene his own rally and then announce that he's an independent, but then he supports the president. That will be fair to him and to the party.
No, but what if he was just going to attend as a common monanchi?
No, but I know he wants to ride on the popularity of Jubilee and the president. Definitely, definitely. He's playing a game. So I would advise that gentleman because I like him. I've watched him several years on TV. I'd think he should be a bit, a little more tactical in terms of ensuring that he does not become a whiner. Every day whining and saying, "Oh, I mean, I've been chased as I've received a call from a county commissioner." I think he should mobilize his own support, mobilize the people who believe in him. And perhaps, or perhaps not, he may win.
Justice, I hear you. Thank you for calling and for watching. Allow me to speak to Collins Oyugbe from Kasarani. Collins, good evening.
Thank you, Linda.
Go on, I can hear you.
Yes, thank you very much. What I wanted to say, what I wanted to say for it actually is that the MP deserved it right. You remember Madraka Day when you had that function? And there is now Gona Raparilo Dunga. The Teto MP is on record saying it was good and it does deserve what you want to be acknowledged. Now, it is his time. He is on, actually on record saying when we are fighting for IEDC to be changed, we have enough tiagas for that running battle. So now, feel the peace. Give me less than letting lie on me.
Okay, right, I hear you, Collins. So, Carvinz, go ahead. You wanted to educate us. And meanwhile, Guevenge is still in our Nyeri studio. He's listened to all you guys have said.
Yes, I want him to listen. I want him to listen because the IEDC had summoned several candidates to Nairobi for disciplinary action. They were listened to. But if you followed the proceedings, you find there were two governors who were there. One submitted that his opponent had come to pass near where he was holding a rally.
Yeah, I read that.
You read that?
Yeah.
And two, there was also another candidate who was fined 450,000 for wearing a photo of his party, of a party leader, who is not his party because he's independent. So I am seeing a situation here where this guy, actually the county commissioner, was helping this man.
He was helping Guevenge.
He was helping him because he can be summoned here for interfering with a rally convened by a political party that he does not belong to.
Okay, educate me, educate me.
I'm going to educate you.
Guevenge cannot just attend that function as a Kenyan. Where is the problem there?
But remember, the warning he was given that you have intelligence that you are coming to heckle the president at this rally.
Question is, was he intending to even heckle the president?
He should have been advised.
Actually, he's still with us. Guevenge, can you hear me? Mushmua? Mushmua, can you hear me?
Yes, Linda, I can hear you. Thank you. And I can hear you, Linda. I am glad that you've given me the opportunity to come back. I didn't know this debate was going to be about my person. If it is, then it's only fair that you allow me to continue to give my right to reply.
Yes, you have the right of reply.
Because the callers, the panelists, the panelists who are there have completely misjudged, misunderstood and misread what I have said and what has happened.
Okay.
Linda, the phone call that I received came at 9:41 this morning when I was having breakfast with my colleagues and some friends. And there was no indication as to my attendance or otherwise of any rally or any place whatsoever. Number one. Number two, the itinerary was coming to Teto constituency, which is in Nyeri County, which is the constituency for which I currently and still presently serve. If the head of state is attending my constituency, it is well within my right as a member of parliament and also as a senior leader in the National Assembly to be present to welcome him to my constituency and address the few concerns that some of my constituents have that may or may not have been met by the government and so on and so forth. So for anybody to imagine that I have no rights, forget even as a member of parliament, but even as a Kenyan, to attend a place where the president is and I am a sitting member of parliament, then those people are completely misguided and don't understand politics. Number two, the question of the telephone call from the county commissioner, their threat, the specific and implicit threat that he made to me and he said, and I've reported this to the police, he has intelligence that I have organized people to heckle the deputy president, not even the president, the deputy president. And that if that, if that should happen, can I finish? If that should happen, I would be treated as an enemy of the state. Linda, enemies of the state are people who have committed treason against the country. Enemies of the state, I don't think at present, any politician, not even the leadership in NASA are considered enemies of the state. So that is a very heavy threat indeed, not to be made lightly by anybody, not least of all a very junior civil servant to an elected leader and a sitting chair of the Committee of Defence and Foreign Relations over which we oversight even the National Intelligence Service. So which intelligence is this that he had that I did not have? And which heckling was this that I was going to do in Teto which did not happen in Karatina or in Moranga or in Kiambu or anywhere else? So was I responsible for all those episodes in other places? If it was heckling indeed, yet, the constitution provides specifically for people to air their views in public at any point in time. So which is what happened today in Karatina? People said, "We don't want to hear about six-piece voting." The president acknowledged and he said, "Fine, no problem. Let the people decide, but give me my votes." So this discussion you're having with your panel there and somebody, you know, trying to insist or to imply that we have no rights to support Jubilee. Every party has a right to support the candidate for the presidency that they choose. That is an individual's right. And that is the right of independent candidates. And that is what we have expressed even as an alliance. The Kenya Alliance of Independent Candidates endorsed His Excellency the President and the Deputy President in public as every other party which is not Jubilee did endorse in support of the presidency from Kanu to Nak Kenya to PNU to Mayandeleo Chap Chap and so on and so forth. Those who are fighting specifically independence are doing so out of guilt, out of guilt.
Tete Member of Parliament, Silvanus, thank you. He had the right of reply and sir, thank you for staying with us. Final comments, we need to move on now.
Exactly. First and foremost, we are now clear on what...
Yeah, at least now he's clarified, now you have a clear picture.
Now, if the function that is to be held in Tete is for the campaign, is meant for the August elections, then he ought not to attend as a member of parliament. Because that is, I mean, the president, the deputy are on campaign trail.
It doesn't matter that the president is addressing his people.
It doesn't matter, I mean, it's a campaign trail. The president is seeking, he's not actually the president then when he's talking to those people. He's speaking to them in his capacity as a Jubilee candidate. They say they've got Kenya Alliance of Independent Candidates. Of course, I don't really call it Kenya Alliance because it, you know, it comprises of few people from Rift Valley and Central supporting the deputy president, because I don't see my independent candidates in Kisii, my opponents, supporting President Uhuru Kenyatta. So it's not really Kenya. These people, they are only in support of Uhuru Kenyatta for their own benefit. They are not supporting him because they believe in his ideologies. They are looking for political survival. Inasmuch as the constitution allows them for, you know, political association in Article 38, they also need to understand that the rights of, their rights are limited to the extent of the meaning of the word independent. They are independents. Article 85 sets out the threshold or the requirement for one to run as an independent candidate. You ought not to be a member of a political party. So why should you be complaining that you've been barred from attending a campaign trail for another political party?
Because you're a citizen who wants to go and live with the president, Alex.
As a citizen, you can't actually attend there as a citizen because in any case you'll start complaining that I've been mistreated and stuff like that. He can't stand, he can't sit like citizens.
Alex, finally. I can understand where my colleague, Mr. Silvanus, is coming from. He is a candidate at the NASA. So I can understand he is protecting his staff. To that extent, I respect his position. But I cannot respect his policy and principle behind what he is saying. Independent candidates are here to stay, there's nothing we can do about it. We're going to get rid of the position, we have to amend the question. Finally, for now, we have to contend with their popularity or otherwise. We have, and if they want to endorse the president, so be it. It is their right to do that. And remember, they have supporters who are coming to those rallies. What are they supposed to do? You can't ignore that multitude of supporters of the independents or other parties other than Jubilee.
Okay. People, we need to move on. So we are done with independent candidates and what happened yesterday in Moranga and the Tete Member of Parliament. So now let's move to a different story. NASA has filed a suit challenging the ballot paper tender awarded to Al Goreh. So Justice George O'Doungar directed the opposition to serve IABC and Dubai Best Printing Firm with the suit papers. This is happening 46 days to the election, the carvins. What are your thoughts?
I need to remind you that Kenyans would prefer a free, fair, reliable, verifiable, acceptable elections more than they would like an election in time which you can't even tell the winner like we had in 2007. So if we are going to postpone the elections so that we have a free and fair election, so be it. But we are not going to take a situation where one party complains that these people who are going to print the ballot papers are friends of our opponents and instead of listening to them, instead of telling them that we are going to investigate, you are telling them we are not going to change anything. I think that is not fair. So we would rather even have the election postponed. Anything can be postponed whether it is in the constitution. I know that is what he wants to talk about. Don't we have a parliament that is not obeying the third gender rule? And we still have it, I think, 2010 up to now. That is seven years after we brought in the new constitution.
Okay.
The question of postponement does not come here, in my opinion.
And by the way, I'm going to play a bite by the Chief Justice.
Correct. The question of postponement shouldn't even be here in the first place. Because I think that is an excuse by the IABC to run away from their responsibilities of free, fair and credible elections. In the past, we've held elections, nominations, three weeks before elections and we still have our papers printed and the names all printed, I mean, from the presidential candidate downwards. And still we run, I mean, we hold our elections. Now, elections are supposed to be held on a Tuesday, second Tuesday of August in every fifth year. As at now, it's on 8th of August, 2017. So that is clear. What we are saying is this, we are talking about 46 days. We, one party is feeling that there is a party that has got an added advantage. We are talking about national election, not general election, not a by-election. Very serious matter. We've heard a very bad history then, like in 2007, where people complained about stolen elections and we still, we went to violence. So what you are saying is this, 46 days are not so, you know, they're not so few as IABC wants to put it for printing. And any printer can tell you they can print ballot papers within three days. And let me tell you, those papers will actually get here two days before elections.
IABC Chair says we don't have, they don't have enough time.
IABC Chair is a lawyer, he is not a printer.
Is there any other way of dealing with this without going to the courts?
Yes, there is. All major political players need to sit down, come up with an amicable solution. But it should be, should not be limited to not having Al Goreh as the printer. They should actually go as early as yesterday.
I totally disagree with him and also him. There's a reason why we call IABC independent.
Yes.
And it is the first adjective in the description of the, of the institution. You cannot call in political parties to determine who is supposed to be the, who is supposed to be given the tether for printing ballot papers. And it cannot happen, it shouldn't happen. But more fundamentally, I am not surprised by what he has said that if it means we postpone the elections, so be it. In fact, that is the very reason why all these shenanigans are being played.
You think it's very important to postpone the elections?
It didn't come from me, it came from the horse's mouth.
Which horse's mouth?
Yeah, this horse. You see, this saying that this case is inevitably going to lead all might lead at all, even if it leads to postponement of the elections. Of course, that in itself is a betrayal or a confession that that is an inevitability that is going to arise from the filing of this case, which is very unfortunate. Secondly, Article 1, Sub-Article 1 of the Constitution of the Republic of Kenya is very clear. Even the court itself, not even IABC, not even Wajiko herself can alter the date of election. There are several countries even like US, the date is fixed of elections. In Kenya, it is supposed to be the second Tuesday of August of every fifth year. When you go to your calendar, you'll find it is on 8th of August. And that is why I agree with the CJ when he said that all the cases that are there, and now we have 16 appeals cases and one was filed in fact yesterday. All the cases that are pending in court must be disposed of. And there is no way that the courts are going to determine those cases in such a way as to force the postponement of elections because the date is fixed. That is what he said, that is what he meant, I did not otherwise. Yes, so as far as I'm concerned, it is okay, we must go on with the elections. It is also okay, it is also okay for anyone who has any issue with the electoral process and electoral system in Kenya to go to court and seek redress. It's okay, so me, I have no problem with that. So long as, so long as we hold our elections on 8th of August.
So whatever happens, that date is when we'll have the elections. Does it matter that five presidential candidates aren't comfortable with Al Goreh?
You know, if all of them are comfortable with Al Goreh and all of them are wrong, if all of them are wrong, then what do you do? For me, the word independence is very important. For me, the word independence is very important.
No, I think, no, I think we are getting a bit of confusion here. Let me say, we shouldn't be supporting things just because we come from a certain political inclination. At times, we look at the country at large and look at the peace stability of this country.
So are you saying this because you're...
What you're saying is this... No, 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 I'm not looking at this because Raile Odinga said this. And I'm on record here saying some things Raile Odinga speaks are not things that I can support personally. Like boycotting elections because of this and this and this. I mean, there are better ways of saying such things, that is wrong. However, now, we need to look at this thing critically. Al Goreh has connections with the president, the sitting president.
Those are allegations, those are allegations.
Let me say that things that last eventually and become big are things that, you know, are brought out of perceptions. Look around, everything that is brought out of perception. We are talking about, actually, we need to clean up that perception, a bad perception that IABC is probably working with some political coalition. So it is upon IABC not to chest thump like they are doing, that whether you boycott or whatever you do, we do not care. I mean, we are talking about a country, we are talking about elections. We are talking about a country that has history of violence out of elections. We should have peaceful way of settlement, I mean, clearly.
Carvins.
Linda, you know, we have Jubiliars from the current government and they have everything going their way. When you see a whole Chief Justice come up and tell nobody should go to court because the elections, how can he say that? To him, anybody going to court is his customer, he should welcome them. But let me tell you one more thing. The standard prints 1 million pages per day. In fact, not per day, they collect news in the day and print them. One day, they click several, 1 million pages. How would Al Goreh not print just those number of pages in three months?
I think you're being unfair to the CJ.
No, 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 no.
You're being unfair.
I am going back to the CJ. In fact, I got that message when I was sitting right here for 11. He said the courts are not going to accept any delay in the elections. What he was trying to do, what Jubilee always does with all its organs, is give direction to IABC indirectly.
But you do realize his office sent a clarification.
Yes. No, 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 no. He sent a clarification because there was noise outside. He had some noise outside, so he had to send a clarification. You know, all these government organs, they keep on giving IABC the cue to follow, the cue to follow.
Okay.
That is why you see, when NASA complains, it is Jubilee. It is Jubilee that responds even before IABC responds because they are being given the cue by Jubilee.
But to be fair, but to be fair, he says it did not mean that the elections cannot be postponed.
This is misuse of government. Look at this call that went to Nyeri. It was from a government official not to attend a political party function. What does he have to do with it? It's misuse of government.
On the issue of the CJ, my only reservation on his statements comes to the extent of timelines that one ought to file a petition that is in court.
Correct.
You look at the constitution, it allows one Kenyan, any Kenyan who is, who feels disgruntled to take that matter to court for settlement, for redress. So clearly, when he gives timelines and then with the kind of work, you know, workload that is in our courts, clearly there is a, there is a problem because some people may not get justice. I've actually seen it in my constituency. The Jubilee candidate won fairly and then when he went to court, he was thrown out, he was told, okay, go to the party, go back to the party to decide the winner. Yet he had won outrightly and the loser was given the ticket. So that is what is happening in several, several places.
That's the only issue you have with what the CJ had to say.
Exactly, I'm having an issue with the CJ statement. Just like what the former CJ said earlier and this I say out of, I mean, with much respect.
I'm going to play that right before I give you the chance to let me know what...
No problem, to defend the CJ.
No, I'm not giving the chance to defend the CJ, but he has a different opinion on what the CJ said, probably he needs to clarify that. Let's speak to Stanley Kamau from Kahawa West. Stanley, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, thanks for watching, what's your comment, your contribution?
Okay, my contribution is regarding the Chief Justice comment on the, on the... Yes?
Go on, I can hear you.
I think the Chief Justice is in order... Yeah, because, hello?
We can hear you, Stanley, please go on.
I think the Chief Justice is in order to comment on that issue because she, according to my understanding, he commented on the issue of evidence. If the NASA have evidence, then it's in order, the court will make that issue on the...
Okay, first of all, allow me to correct you. The Chief Justice said nothing about the allegations that are being made by NASA. But thank you for calling and watching the program. Allow me now to speak to Robert Abue who is calling from Mombasa. Robert, can you hear me?
Hello?
Can you hear me, Robert?
Yes, I can hear you.
Go on.
Now, I want to comment on this ballot paper issue. Now, I'll give you an example of Britain having 46.5 million voters, yet snap polls were called and in less than 40 days, they had their elections. What is so, what is so big about 19 million registered voters? Not, I mean, this can't be given to a neutral person so that we can, we can forget about this issue because it looks like somebody is hell-bent on having it Al Goreh week.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe you can educate me, I don't know. But I think Britain has got more registered voters, they held it in less time, they have 46 days. We can still make this right.
Why are you putting me on the spot? Okay, the Chief Justice, IABC Chair Fula Chabukati said they don't have, they do not have time and the deal has been signed. But thank you for calling. Let's listen into what the CJ had to say, then we can speak to Alex.
At least 45 days from the date of election. I mean, the IABC should have the entire list so that they can print the ballot papers. As the judiciary, we don't want to hamba that process. And you know, if we interfere with that process in any way, it is going to interfere with the elections. And there is no question of us not holding a general election on 8th of August. That one, we must all work and as, I mean, work together and have that general election, I mean, held as is required by law.
Mm-hmm. Exactly, exactly, that's what I was saying. He was really saying the court would not be the reason why we should not or we cannot hold elections on 8th of August because that is what the law says, exactly my point.
And by the way...
And let me finish. Then, to correct you and try to what the CJ has said. Remember, it is not the CJ who set timelines for the disposal of these cases that are pending in court, including 16 appeals. And the 12 of cases that have already been filed against the IABC. It is the Elections Act. It has the timelines of everything that must have been done, including 45 days when the list of candidates must be handed in to IABC and everything cleared by that time so that the same names can be taken to the printer for processing of the ballot papers. So he is right. He has read the Constitution, he has read the Elections Act and the regulations and rules that govern the elections. So he is right.
He's right.
Yes.
Silvanus, how do you wrap this up?
Exactly, on my, on the issue of election postponement, I think it doesn't even come up. Nobody has gone to court to seek that extension period, nobody. What is in court is about Al Goreh's confidence.
The firm that is now printing the ballot papers.
So, and it should be clear that there is no coalition that has shown indication of postponement of elections. And as we are speaking right now, people should be clear on what NASA wants. NASA wants Al Goreh out, not only NASA, actually all the states. NASA wants it out and that is the point. Whether they are out tomorrow through court process, through whatever process, it doesn't matter. They should actually pack and go.
Okay, Carvins, you have the final word here.
You also noticed that we still have cases pending in court that needs to be finished before printing begins. These cases are in court under the watch of both IABC and the very court centered by the CJ. And it's not finding anything so serious about them. In Yattika, they have said they have to do reelection in another 48 hours and I don't know which other cases are still there. They have never found those as a threat to the date of the elections. But they find Al Goreh going out as a threat to the election. If they did a proper procurement, we would be having number one, number two, number three, number four. All they needed to do is say Al Goreh out, number two, in. But they decided to do some cat and mouse business with this thing.
So whichever way, the only way this is going to be settled is if a different firm is given this task.
Correct, that is the only way. And you can't talk about contract here.
You know, I'm surprised that there is this...
I'm thinking about 46 days, I'm thinking about Chabukati saying they don't have time, the deal has already been signed.
No, I think I said what matters is we have free, fair, credible elections. And secondly, no one is talking about open tether system. Remember, the obsession is with Al Goreh, so I do not know why. Why this personal obsession with Al Goreh?
It's because they have connection with the president.
Because it is the only one which has a connection to the other party.
There is no, there is no evidence, by the way, let's not be unfair people.
Evidence, that has to go to some court.
Nobody knows, hey. In all fairness, those are allegations.
Yes.
Those are allegations, those are allegations.
You are creating a sensationalism.
Clearly, when you see Jubilee holding brief for IABC in defense of what NASA had said, in fact, it brings more doubt than we even thought. Even if there are allegations, the very first person to respond, you know, came from the government. The first person to respond is the government official, not IABC. A person holding brief for IABC and then we call them independent? I mean...
We have to draw a line between the government of Kenya and the Jubilee party.
We have to protect our institutions. It is not only Jubilee that is supposed to protect our institutions. Remember, IABC...
Protect from what?
To protect against its enemies.
There are no enemies of the, there are no enemies. Sorry, NASA just complained, all they needed to do is tell NASA we are going to investigate and find out if really there is a connection between Al Goreh.
So if they did that, would it make a difference?
Exactly, exactly.
No, if they do it now, would it make a difference?
What the chairman said is exactly what Dua Lee had spoken earlier. Is exactly what all the government officials were responding to, you know, NASA earlier. I mean, you don't need rocket science to understand that this clearly is a collab between IABC and Jubilee. This is wrong.
Those are allegations.
Al Goreh should be out, by all means.
Those are allegations and those are allegations and they are wild at that and we know that. In the past, every time that Raile comes up with scandal and exposes it and we admire him and he has always been right, it is because he has given specifics and particulars on dates.
And I like, I like, I like what you've said.
He has not.
I like what you've said. Raile has always been right. So clearly, you have, you have presidents, you have presidents of Raile being right all through. You have presidents of Raile being right all through. So clearly, even without evidence, Raile is right.
You all can't talk at the same time, guys.
Okay.
Really. People, you're watching the best thing. Okay, I want us to look at something that independent candidate running for Nairobi Governorship, Peter Kenneth, had to say a couple of days ago and it has something to do with the Deputy President, William Ruto. Then we'll have a conversation with the three gentlemen in studio. Okay, so Peter Kenneth pointing and accusing finger Deputy President William Ruto. Is he being unfair to the Deputy President?
He is also being unfair to himself.
Why?
You know why? Peter Kenneth is, was he the two, a very respectable member of society, politician and also a businessman. But when he has entered into politics, into the market and mire of politics, electoral politics, he has tarnished his name and he has become someone else. Why do you go making such an allegation as you know very well? If, by then we are here, when those nominations of Jubilee were recorded, we were in studio. Who was making most noise and the most complaints? It was Sonko, if you remember. It was Sonko who was making most of the noise. And at some point, he was so angry, even at journalists themselves, told them, can't you see what is happening? So, in my own estimation, if Peter Kenneth wants to prop up his popularity, even though it exists, then he had better come up with very nice and neat ways of doing the same and not riding on...
This is not the way to do it.
Yeah, it's not the, and it can't earn him an extra vote of any Nairobian by virtue of doing that. It won't earn him votes, it won't earn him votes.
Inasmuch as the DPP has a history of dictatorial nature, right from his...
Those are your words, you know.
My words.
Come on.
I tend to think, those are my words. I tend to think Peter Kenneth overrates himself too much. I think he is, and he has failed to learn. In 2013, he was voted to the last man and he won elections on Facebook and Twitter.
On social media.
Yes, social media. So I think he's still, he's still a student. He has failed to learn that clearly you don't really come out and think, okay, fine, probably because you speak soft and people, Nairobians will love you and stuff like that. The truth of the matter is Peter Kenneth lost fairly to Sonko, clearly. And there is nothing like dragging, you know, the Deputy President to his wars. This guy lost.
The Deputy President had nothing to do with this.
Had nothing to do with that. I mean, I think there is this position, this guy thought that probably he could run with a wave of Jubilee, become the governor and then probably at the end, you know, become succession politics that eventually becomes the president of Kenya. But clearly Nairobi has shown him that this is Nairobi politics. This guy has been... This guy has been, you know, playing his game in Chag, in Muranga. This is Nairobi, he lost.
It's a different ballgame altogether. Carvins?
You know, Peter Kenneth was a Muranga candidate sent to Nairobi. He belonged to Muranga, but when he was sent here, he found the game is so different. The game here needs a Sonko and a Kidero. Unfortunately, for Nigerians, the electorate we have around normally wants to reward somebody or to punish another. And when they think they need to punish you, whether fairly or unfairly, they don't care who they want to replace you. Like there are some people in Nairobi who think Sonko can even be a quarter of a replacement for Kidero. No, please, let us do civic education and let our voters know, when you want a leader, you must first of all look at what is the role of this leader in our society. You don't just pick anybody from any corner of the street and say he needs to replace someone. For Peter Kenneth, for Peter Kenneth, let me tell you, he was a better candidate than Sonko. But unfortunately, the electorate we have around think Sonko should be rewarded for waiting until they see some people have a problem, then going with short-term goodies for a few minutes and giving them. That is what you do to small children. When they are hungry, you give them a bucket of ugali or a small piece of sweet. They will go for the sweet.
Listen.
Because...
That Sonko that he's describing is the same Sonko that is going to go all the way to City Hall.
Sonko is not going anywhere, my brother.
Going all the way is not a problem. What I'm very sure...
He's going to the ballot, that means.
No, 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 we are not on Sonko. So the thing is, Peter Kenneth, unfair to the Deputy President?
Of course, of course.
Unfair?
On this one, it's unfair to the Deputy President.
I don't think it's unfair. Let's, let me show you what Deputy President has done. You know, these people belong to Jubilee, but they don't see. They see the president had to run to Nakuru to sort out a mess by the Deputy President. He had to run to Eldoret to sort out another mess there. He had to run to Bomet to sort out another one.
Yes, strictly on Peter Kenneth.
Then now he's going to run here. So Peter Kenneth has seen this man for who he is.
No, but you see, like we all mentioned, those are allegations that Peter Kenneth is breaking.
What you're saying, the Deputy President can do actually as what Peter Kenneth has said. He has that character, he can actually mess everything, he bulldozes people around. But on this one, he never did that. On this one, he never did that.
At her puncture on the road, people will be blaming Ruto.
Okay, listen, we are just about to wrap this up, but let's, it won't be fair if we don't talk about what's happening in Machakos. So the courts allowed Wavinya Deiti to continue and vie for the governorship position in Machakos. Let's listen into what she had to say after that judgment was made, then we'll have like what, five, four minutes to talk about this and then we can wrap up.
Lakini, mimi ninge uliza to I E B C, they need to be fair. Basabaku kamo ange quata, kamo ange, ange uliza regesha o political parties vizuri, na wa uliza maswali atunge fika hapa. Lakini mimi nasama, yali ondwa le sipite. Kenya is bigger than Chebukati, Kenya is bigger than Wavinya.
Sasa ma ndele pale mupagiye onchapu water Machako.
Okay, I don't know much of Kiswahili, but that one, that one is not Kiswahili. Yali what?
I used, I used to get a name in Kiswahili, so you can get this from the highest...
Yali Peter Sidwele.
That was wrong. Yali Peter Sidwele.
Okay, Carvins. So of course now, her name is going to be on the ballot, on the ballot paper, so she's going to go up against Alfred Mutua. Does he have a reason to worry now?
Mutua is the one who needs to worry and worry very much.
Why?
I told you what the electorate likes to do. They like to punish and reward. It is time now to reward Wavinya Deiti.
For what?
She has gone through so much under the hands. And you know, when you look at the way these things were done, it is very obvious that when Mutua offered to back Jubilee and its presidential candidate, he became a government project and they had to use government agencies as much as possible to frustrate Wavinya Deiti because Wavinya Deiti is definitely going to take Machakos. There is no two-way about it.[1640.36]